Thanks, everybody, for coming. We have two sort of speakers, I'll call them speakers, although I don't want to make it more formal than it really is. John Gannon is with the Division of Local Services. He has been an attorney for a long time. I won't say how long, over thirty years, and he's a seasoned. And he's represented over a hundred cities and towns at one point in his career throughout the state. Now, obviously, with the Division of Local Services, the Department of Revenue. And so he's got a wealth of experience. The best part is he's also a city councillor in Watertown. So you can sort of relate to the seats that you sit in. So I'll let John go, and then I'll introduce John Clifford after that. But I think what we'll do, if we could, just let John go through his presentation, and then just have open question and answers after that, if that works. That way, get through the materials and then wide-open question and answer whatever you want to ask, whatever you want to clarify. John's focused a little bit on the form of government. Obviously, council manager form of government, he's going to touch a little bit on, you know, what New England and Massachusetts used to be, what it's sort of turning into, our form of government, how it relates in parallels with other forms of government. So that's mostly what John's going to touch on, but he'll probably do a lot of other things as well. He does this very frequently, and so it's a wealth of knowledge for us and it should be for you. So with that, turn it over to John.
Thank you, Michael. And greetings, fellow councillors. So I'm John Gannon, and my background, as Michael spoke to, I've been a city attorney for, actually, I went to law school. I was probably one of the rare attorneys who decided to become a municipal attorney before going to law school. And I worked for a state agency after college that dealt with cities and towns, and it was going to municipal workshops and hearing other, hearing the city attorneys talk about what they do and what their mission is. And, you know, I've always been oriented toward public policy and the law, so it's a perfect combination. And so my first assignment as a municipal attorney, I was Watertown's city attorney, assistant town attorney, acting town attorney. Watertown likewise has a council manager form of government. And flashback to later in my career, I ran for, I'm serving my third term as a council at large in Watertown, similar form of government as well. And I've represented through a couple of different law firms. I was both Watertown's in-house attorney and Somerville's in-house attorney. Then two law firms, I represented over a hundred towns directly as well. So happy to be speaking before you. And so presently, the last ten years, I've been working with the Division of Local Services. So Division of Local Services is a state agency that deals with, a lot of my colleagues certify their tax rates for every single city or town, and they look at assessment practices for every single city or town as well. And I provide legal support not only for them, but we provide an attorney-of-day advice for every single city and town official. So I'm up to three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns at this point. But Michael kindly invited me to talk about municipal forms of government. And then I did a little dive into your charter and thought I'd share some of my thoughts. And firstly, it's a well-written charter and already thoughtfully drafted and it was a pleasant surprise. So I'll start here, and the order of presentation, I'm going to talk about the town meeting, select board administrator form of government that you guys previously had prior to your adoption in 2010. And I'll speak to the forms of mayor, city council forms of government when I was working as Somerville City Attorney. That was the form of government I worked with. And also, I'll finalize on town council, town manager, which the form that you guys are familiar with, and likewise, I am too. And then I'm going to go through some points of your town charter and then just speak about issues pertinent to town councils in general, you know, peer-to-peer. So first form, town meeting, select board form of government. And representative democracy at its very earliest, the first communities in Massachusetts were set up, a meeting, you know, citizens come in. They serve in the legislature body, the town meeting, annual town meetings, sometimes special town meetings. Select board is the chief executive officer as a board. And sometimes they appoint a manager or administrator. Small towns, the board will be the administrative body. So they will hire all the, you know, they formulate the budget, work with the finance committee, and they will, part-time folks, non-professionals working with that. And then sometimes you have open town meetings, which means everyone, every resident voter is allowed to participate, take votes on the budget, and working with adopting legislation, all the aspects that come up in a town meeting. But oftentimes, representative town meeting members are elected. Brookline was the first nation to establish a, first town in the nation to establish a representative town meeting. So folks elect within their precinct members who serve on the town meeting. So you're going for a smaller crowd of folks attending town meeting as opposed to the open town meeting where everyone who shows up makes house votes. So pros and cons, the form of government. The professionalization of municipal government that I've observed over close to forty years at this point. It's a cumbersome process. It's not, doesn't allow for quick deliberative decision-making like for a council form of government. You know, we have an appointed executive, I mean, pros, they can remove their town administrator, whoever they hire to do the day-to-day. And cons, as I alluded to before, it's cumbersome, decentralized, it's tough to get a real instant decision from, you know, to do an action. And things drag out. And I've represented a lot more county forms of government in my career. Then we've got the mayor city council. And cities may have a mayor council if they have a population of at least twelve thousand residents. Voters elect both the mayor and the city council. And the city council is a legislative branch, like you guys as town councillors and me as well. The mayor is the chief executive officer. He or she is charged with negotiating a budget, negotiating all the chief executive officer functions, chief administrative officer. You've got negotiating collective bargaining agreements. Sometimes the city mayor is appoint professional manager or administrative officer to run the day-to-day. And in some cities, City of Cambridge is one, voters elect the city council. City council vote amongst themselves to appoint a mayor from within the body. That's kind of a weaker form of government, but those other cities have a professional manager generally. Good parts about a mayor of council, it's a smaller legislative body than the open town meeting system, for example. The chief executive officer is elected directly. And as council meetings, town council and city council meetings, there are more frequent legislative, more frequent meetings. So things can get done on a quicker basis than within town. And then the cons, with a mayor form of government, you basically don't know who you're going to get as a mayor. You've got the popularity contest. You could have a visionary mayor, or sometimes not so. So therefore, the potential for political appointments and key administrative positions could be, could exist. And like I said, the possibility, the mayor's not qualified, has to learn on the job and what have you. And that prevents forward thinking immediately before, as a learning curve is established. And then, you know, less potential for a professional administrative, you know, where you get perhaps politically connected officials running offices and the finance positions. It slows things down. And just because of the nature of cities, city elections, you've got mayors are generally elected either four years or every two years. So you're not going to have the potential for long-term planning. The mayor has to show results at each election cycle, and so do the individual councillors. So there's more of a, like, what can we do within this election cycle? I also noted that in the mayor city council form of government, oftentimes, I've observed, there's one or two city councillors who envision becoming mayor at some point. So they'll, you know, there's not a cooperative relationship in that form of government. So let's move on to our form of government, town council manager form of government. And I'll step back and say, this was the trend in professional administration of government and local government in Massachusetts. And I work, my daytime job, I work with the Division of Local Services. We have a wing within the office that does technical advice. And generally, they've been recommending town council manager forms of government, and I'll go over why. So town councillors, you know, you're the legislative, we're the legislative branch. The town manager is the chief executive officer. That individual appoints key officials, prepares the budget, negotiates collective bargaining and approves contracts. So in contrast with the mayor form of government, generally, the council, because the council appoints the manager due to professional qualifications, education and training, it's going to be more of a cooperative scenario going on versus a city. So the council establishes qualifications for a town manager, and you go out and find that person. And the results and benefits, you can look more long-range, long-term planning, longer-term capital improvement project planning, shared objectives, and more transparency on budget information. Because I know about you guys, but my city manager, Watertown just officially became a city, or we adopted in 2021, but just a nomenclature. But we have a manager that, you know, you have a cooperative relationship, and the manager knows that if we have individual questions, they will get answered. So there's more transparency than, say, the mayor form of government where the mayor, luckily under the statute, could just keep everything close to the vest and dump a three-hundred-page budget to a council and expect them to look over it in forty-five days. And on your charter, that wouldn't happen, because there's a lot of steps in the way, which is why I liked your charter. And I'll go on to the, something about the cons. So now it's like, compared to a town meeting, open town meeting, you know, the council manager form of government has smaller participation, because the decision-making is vested in nine councillors. And although you're elected, additional school committee, library trustees as well. Councillors, but even with that, you know, councillors are free under the charter to appoint citizen advisory committees and generate other outcomes of public participation. So in addition, you've got the regular boards, committees and commissions that every city does have. Let's go into your charter. So I was intrigued by your charter, frankly. The, I've seen enough charters to know sometimes which attorney drafted them. Or who was a Collin Center for Public Government Charter, or there's a gentleman who was a town council of Canton some years ago. He drafted a lot of the town council manager charters. So I recognize the hand you are, but with yours, I saw this more of an amalgam, you know, great ideas and different processes that I've seen. So my own opinion that the, I noted that thoughtful draftsmanship expands state regulations and allows more public participation processes, certainly in the budget and other issues. But I'll go through quickly your own charter, you know, because I had to learn a lot.
I know we're waiting till later, but you just changed our nine-member, seven precinct to a large, to set six at-large and three precincts. Well, not three precincts, but.
I was going out the original, so I should have updated that.
The district didn't get a reach off of that.
Oh, sure.
So that's a very, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and that's the beauty of charters, they can be formulated or reformulated, reconstituted as the needs arise. So stay corrected. So the first one, typically, charters have similar types of issues. You want to have division of powers, establish roles within local government. Section one dash three basically delineates all the legislative powers are vested in you guys as town councillors, and the administrative side, fiscal management and business affairs are vested in the town manager. And everyone has a role, you know, within the system. And then I was impressed by your section one dash eight ethical standards that elected and appointed officials are expected to demonstrate the highest ethical standards. A lot of city charters just deferred in chapter two sixty-eight A, the state ethics law, but it was nice to see that in the charter. So showed some thoughtfulness in the drafting of the charter as well. And I'm going on the 2010 version, so please feel free to let me know about changes along the way. And I'll just run through some key provisions of your charter. Section two dash two states that all powers of the town shall be vested in the town council, except as otherwise provided by law or the charter. So you guys are the chief elected officials of the town. You choose a town manager based upon the qualifications, education and training to have a majority of members appoint that person, that individual. And every body, commission, committee needs a person to chair. So you've got the town council president who presides over all meetings, and is also the sermally head of government. So you're the town council president? And so in council, she'll also elect a vice president, and generally, wonderful. And generally, vice president fills in for the town council president in the absence of that individual. And, you know, and the chart also specifies clear lines of authority between council and manager. And that's stated a few times in the charter. So the drafters were pretty clear about issues like that. In fact, they drafted two dash six three that the town council should not direct or request the appointment or appointment of any person or the removal of any person for which town manager is responsible. I mean, I can, the cities I represent of councillors were, you know, always in the mayor's office asking for appointments and things like that. So in your charter, it makes that clear in the delineation about, you know, the appointment power is vested in the town manager. On the next slide, and I'll just go through quickly the, you know, the best time to speak and also to ask questions. So section two dash six, for the town council, shall with the officers and employees serving under the town manager should not give any orders or directions to any such officer, either publicly or privately. So it's another draftsmanship issue with regard to, you know, clearly delaying the roles of the councillors as well as town manager. That was interesting. Section two dash eight, council staff, everybody needs someone to organize the meeting, take meeting minutes and the like. You've got the ability to appoint a council clerk. And I can speak to Watertown. Watertown subsequently, last charter review back in 2021, council, you know, decided to have not only a council clerk, but a municipal policy analyst to help formulate, to do a lot of the work that the councillors are doing on the room. So there's always the possibility of, you know, amending things on. You've got a charter updating process in some years or so. Then section two dash nine provides that, you know, that it gets the legality of ordinances. So there are ordinances and loan orders are not official until they're publicly posted or certain circumstances, you've got the bond council providing notification. And, but you want to make sure those procedures, otherwise, bond council won't certify the vote or give you the loan for the larger school project or whatever, other construction project. Those are important from a legal perspective. So section two dash ten, council may delegate to one of our agencies, the power is vested by general or special law to issue licenses or permits or make regulations relative to licenses and permits. Does the town have a licensing commission to handle that, or is the council?
No, we will vote on all of that.
We vote on all, okay. So you have that ability, but it says may delegate if you chose not to, so good. Next slide, please. And section two dash eleven, council has the right to require town officers or members of the boards or commissions to appear before, provide information relative to inquiries. So that's the important oversight mechanism that town, your town council has. So generally, any city form of government, there's going to be some kind of, be a council mayor, councillors or council, town manager, councillors. It's important to have that ability to generate oversight of actions of either a mayor or a town manager in your case. And in order to bring in folks to testify, whether it be a department head or someone else in the chain of command within the town manager's staff, there's a process required in order for that to be, that to happen. So the council is also allowed to conduct investigations into town affairs, may issue subpoenas, administer oaths and require evidence production. And this charter provision dovetails with the open meeting law. So there's requirement in the open meeting law that in order to have a investigation or to require someone to appear, it must be that person has the ability to have a meeting in private or in open. So they're out there, so every town charter provision has, you know, not everyone, but there are a lot of them. You have to look at the whole picture, not just the charter, but other state and federal laws and other such issues. So section two dash twelve, you have term limits. So councillors cannot serve any more than twelve consecutive years. And that's, and also with regard to the revolving door that we see in Washington, you know, that congressmen, they step down, immediately they are, you know, given some big post or something. So your charter states that no former councillor shall hold a paid office with the town until after, one year after their service on the council. And that dovetails with the State Ethics Commission to some degree, but it actually provides more protection, more ethical compliance than the state ethics law. So that was part of the decision of the drafters of your charter. And then let's get into the role of the town manager. The charter states that the town manager shall be a person of administrative ability, especially qualified by education or training, and have prior experience as a city and town manager or assistant town manager, or the equivalent of private sector level experience. So then council may allow additional requirements. So that's, that to me is a hallmark of the difference between the mayor form and the council manager form. So you're getting someone, you're choosing someone that is, by all intents and purposes, has run governments, can provide you with direction, where oftentimes you have a mayor, you know, their first term or two is dedicated to learning on the job. So because you have a town manager form, you guys can choose the qualifications of who you envision to run your, run your town. So that's a unique, definitely a good thing about town council forms of government. So, and the manager has responsibilities, must devote full-time duties to being town manager, and shall not hold any other elected appointed office in town. So you can just envision the conflict that would occur where your strong chief administrative officer is holding another position. You want your town manager to be your person, your, you know, the person that has a larger vision for your town. So and likewise, you know, the mayor, the manager has some side business, you know, teaches at a university, for example. Can't do so without the approval of your town council. So that's some, you know, some town councils do not have that, that specific or strict requirement, but it's every single city town is different. And then further powers of the town manager, the town manager shall be the chief administrative officer of the town. And further duties, the town manager shall be responsible, the town council, for the proper operation of town affairs, which town manager has given authority by town charter. So it states the town manager works for you guys and it works with you guys. And so what I've always appreciated about the council manager, it's a more cooperative process. So certainly in your budget, I was really pleased to see your requirements on budget. It's very much an open process that I haven't seen in other towns, frankly. So again, the town manager duties, supervise all the officers and employees under thirty to administer municipal operations in accordance with state federal law ordinances and regulations established by council and be the lead central authority for the town, coordinate all activities, town departments, boards, commissions. So we have in towns with boards of selectmen, open town meeting, or it's not a decentralized authority. So you have a board of public works in charge of one element, roads and parks, you have a different board. So under this form of government, the manager coordinates all activities and is responsible as central authority, in reports to you. And town manager also has to keep the council informed of financial conditions, budget projection, which we'll get into in the next slide. And then town manager shall prepare budgets, chief administrative officer, certain types of positions, like administer personnel policies, practice rules and regulations, fix the compensation of municipal employees, initiate collective bargaining, both with unionized employees, and also determine salary compensation levels for non-union employees. And manager, first out, provides staff support to the town council. And manager also serves as Townsley liaison to any regional entity and explore opportunities for intergovernmental cooperation, you know, seeking out state grants, federal grants and the like. And town manager, under your charter, is charged with promoting partnerships among the town council staff, citizens and business, and developing public policy and building a sense of community. So someone has to be a lead day-to-day, nine-to-five, because this is want to do business in town, bring more tax revenue to the town. It's good to have a, you know, your town manager is a focal point to discuss, work with the zoning folks and the like. Also, town manager is the chief administrative officer, as such, is responsible for the supervision and direction of city and town employees. So with that, a power of point, there's a power to suspend, remove department heads, administrative officers provided under the town charter. Oh, further, almost done. The town council should set the compensation for town manager. And council is allowed to appoint a qualified person to serve as a temporary town manager on the event of a vacancy, vacations and the like. Or, you know, if there's a vacancy in a position, you can hire someone as a temporary town manager to keep the continuity of government operations going prior to your, going through the formal process of selecting a town manager. And section four point eight, or four dash eight, the council has authority to remove our manager and circumstances with that. The charter. Then section five point one, administrative organization. Generally, charters have an administrative organization section to adapt to the change of government. So Bridgewater adopted from the select board, you know, town meeting system. So the council is allowed to, you know, to do the, provide the directions or ordinances. You want to reorganize, appoint new agencies, create new agencies. You think there are too many decentralized, you can create, you know, directorates, something like a director of municipal financial affairs for one. And that's the town council's priority ability. And that's slide, then the ability of the town manager to appoint a legal officer of town council, and council confirms that appointment. And at your time, council president shall call a joint meeting, the town council, the town manager and other delegates to review the financial condition of the town prior to the budget process. So I did like, I was impressed by the preliminary budget and a more fleshed-out budget. So on your charter, town manager submit to the council by February first a preliminary budget and showing a complete plan. And then it looks like the council has the ability to send that initial budget back to the drawing board after a lot of input from the council. And then the final budget submitted to your board by, your council by April first. And then that's where statutory procedures can require forty-five days of deliberation by the council. And then that's where statutory procedures can require forty five days of deliberation by the council, council in order to approve the budget. And under your charter, the budget must show, again, long term planning, you know, capital expenses, goals, financial planning, long range planning. And that's, that's, that's to me, especially in my hat, working with the Division of Local Services and the financial realm, I've not seen this in in other charters. So go on, I'm wrapping up my my part. So section six dash three describes the action requires for adoption of the budget. Again, I noted, once the budget is finally presented to the council, council has forty five days in order to adopt the manager's budget. And and then there's oversight that's stated directly in the charter that council shall provide ordinances, procedures, administration, or oversight of the budget. And that's what appear to be a continual continuing section of authority. And section six dash six describes the process of adopting a capital improvement program. You can't borrow for, you can't pay for it all now, so you have to structure things out like that we decided, should I update the kitchen this year or push it up, you know, similar to to town of Bridgewater doing the same again. And then there's both section six dash seven and six dash eight describe the process for long range financial forecasting and then the conducting of an annual audit. And article eight, the the voters have have a chance to weigh in on certain issues. So so this is a voter initiated process. You have three issues where the public can initiate a process, citizen initiative measures. If the residents decided that, hey, we should, Bridgewater should have an ordinance doing X, Y, or Z, and if the council doesn't adopt it and doesn't see the great idea, there's a process for citizens putting a ballot question on to add that as a initiative, so initiating add that as an ordinance. And same with the citizen referendum process. If a measure ordinance is adopted, some folks don't like, there's a a citizen initiative process to get a ballot question on the ballot, to remove a voted on ordinance and such. And then there's a citizen free petition to get advisories and other types of issues. So oftentimes, citizens, I've seen it more so in C and town council manager forms of government. And imparting thoughts, it's that under your charter talks about the delineation of council and 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 the manager. And one issue that I had experienced and I've had individuals, employees of cities or towns I work, shared information derived from executive sessions and the like. So there's, yeah, it's a violation of the two sixty eight, chapters two sixty eight, the state ethics law. So I'm always mindful and and not share what I learned that only I could gather in my elected officials. I just want to share that with you. And also plug for my own agency, a lot of education materials provided by Massachusetts Municipal Association. That's a compendium of city and towns. And MMA.org has a wonderful website. They have a ongoing magazine, they have issues and such. And by being a counselor, as I am, or members of the Massachusetts Municipal Councils Association, not so organized through the Mass Municipal Association, and they have resources and seminars. I've done some like, some webinars along the way and they're very helpful. Then last but not least, Massachusetts Department Revenue Division of Local Services. Website has numerous materials and local government available, generally finances, but well, opportunity. And I said, my remarks and enjoy your service, community, I'll be around for any questions if you have them.
I mean, you want to, as any council has, have any questions for him before we bring the next speaker? Go ahead.
I have one question. We would just ask at one recent council meeting by a gentleman who was the head of the Charter Commission the last time about enforcement of the charter. And I'm just curious, with all your experience that you told us about, ours, our section two point six, exercise of powers, core rules, procedures, C two, says the town council shall be responsible for ensuring that the charter, the laws, the ordinances and other plans, policies and orders for the government of the town are properly implemented and enforced. My question in reading that, and I believe his question was how?
Yeah, so generally, your your town council, individual members of the council don't find the body, the body finds the body. So it's speaking on behalf of the body through a majority of your members. So if you have a a situation, it's probably better to get a vote to declare the action of the of the majority of the council to, in order to fix something or otherwise deal with an issue that's been addressed.
We have a rules and procedures committee.
Yeah.
So chairs over here, is that a good route when you're dealing with?
Just defer to your town council along the way.
Yeah, well, yeah, that too.
Yeah. Maybe I would want to overstep in case like.
I'm just curious, because you've you've said you've been a counselor, you've been an attorney, and you work for the Division of Local Services. So I'm just curious what other councils do, why reinvent?
The enforcement question of issues that the council has come up on numerous occasions. Essentially, our response at this point is, first of all, they're going to have to, like you said, as a body politic, right? But take a vote on the action. That action, they can't necessarily, under our form of government, direct the town to file suit. So their action may have teeth, it may not have teeth. We may have to file an action for a writ. It really depends, so there isn't a clear cut answer to that question. And that's why I think they struggle with it, because the charter doesn't lay it out clearly. The the clearest way to address malfeasance by a counselor is truly through recall. I mean, that that really is the the recourse with the most teeth. But there are instances where a counselor would not take a necessary action, which us as a town, through the town manager, who had directed, would file suit for a writ and say, these are the actions that now have to be taken, or may look for an injunction for some reason. Or so it it isn't a black and white, yes or no, this is what you do to discipline this person. Or it depends on the facts and circumstances of the situation.
Does this cover employee, talking about counselors?
No, so the employee is entirely covered under the town manager's perp. So the council is not to get involved in any employment matters of any type. And that's very clear in the charter.
So there's at least four or five instances that.
Yeah, it's it's the shoot.
Which I I haven't seen that.
The third rail of our form of government, right? And so you have no purview over any town employee other than through the ratification process, for which you ratify certain town employees and or your role as essentially the person who enters into contracts with the town manager. So your purview is over the manager who has the purview over all the other employees. Okay.
I have a question. Is it permissible for the council to ask the manager for details for purposes of oversight?
No, not unemployment issue. It depends on what your matters are, but no, you have no oversight over any employment related manager, employment related issue that is dictated by the town manager. None. The town manager employs the employees of the town, the town manager manages the employees of the town. The town council has zero say over any of those day to day operations, day to day direction by the town manager, none.
Generally, the council's a policymaking board and and the town manager is the administrative officer.
Exactly how our form of government works.
Can I have a question? Can I go to, like, you know, we had a lot of trouble with the water? Can I go to the water department and say, hey, can you walk me through and teach me about this? So I learn more about wells or do I have to do that?
I mean, if you want to understand it, I would go to the town manager first, but if you're going there and you're saying, you know, I think you need to get well number five going instead of, that becomes, that becomes an issue. Like, but if you're just trying to learn things, I mean, use common sense in relation to that.
Well, I I went. Do you have a tree die or a main means how you set up?
I guess those would be questions that if I were you, I'd be inquiring of the town manager. Because it can get very convoluted otherwise.
That's what I did today. That's what I did today. I called, I got in touch with Michael and I met with him at eleven thirty today to ask him questions about what's going on with the water situation. And it was educational, I, you know, I'm fairly new myself and I didn't.
Yes, and I just want to note that I'll be around for questions, happy to answer any questions. So I just wanted to step down and let the next speaker.
Oh, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for.
Thank you. Really good. Just to sort of clarify, because lawyers will tell you one thing and I'll tell you. Yeah, any, if if you were just private citizen, you were curious, absolutely. I mean, that's a question you could call the water department. I will say, and I think Mark has experienced this, employees or department heads are a little on on not on edge, but they're a little sensitive when a counselor comes. Because, you know, they like you aren't sure what they should be, how they should reverse it. But if you, you know, if you ever have a question about, you know, how something is run, you can let me know and I'll connect you, I'll connect you, the two of you, so everybody knows it's absolutely fine. So John Clifford is is another municipal attorney and he's been in practice for quite a while, represents a number of the South Shore towns. Kalen Maury also with Clifford and Kenny is with John. And John was going to just talk a little bit about, you know, some of the things that counselors need to to be cautious of, some of the things, maybe the pitfalls and some of the liabilities associated with being a counselor. And we don't tell you about the liabilities until after you become a counselor. But I will just let John take it away.
I was actually the, it was called the executive assistant in East Bridgewater back in nineteen ninety four. So I'm in my thirtieth year of local government. From there, I became the town administrator in Marshfield until two thousand and seven, when I started the practice. My partner Jamie and I went into partnership in two thousand and thirteen, and right now we represent about twenty five cities and towns. We've worked all over the state. We've worked with city forms of government, council manager forms of government, we've worked with all forms of government. As John indicated to you, your charter really is state of the art, especially here in Massachusetts. We work in a lot of communities that don't have any charter. What your charter gives you that a lot of towns don't have is accountability. You are the chief elected officials responsible for the operation of the town. The town manager is the chief person, that's chief administrative officer that's responsible and he's accountable for the operation, and that is a big difference. One of our communities, Rockland, has a great town administrator, great board, they have a town meeting that works really well. The town administrator doesn't control half the offices in town hall. They have an elected tax collector, an elected treasurer, elected board of assessors, elected board of health. And when you have that kind of system, you lose accountability. So you have a great system, it really, people know where to go, who's responsible when problems arise. Who's responsible to fix the problem? And if it doesn't get fixed, the voters know where to go. So I really do admire what you have. I'm going to go through quickly what my training is, a little, there's a little bit of overlap between what John, between my presentation and John, we're going to talk about. My presentation is going to talk really about practical issues that I see coming up, all right? And I see coming up in all forms of government, I see the challenges that you folks face. And we try to give you some tips on best practices. We'll talk about personnel issues that do arise, personal liability, and a little bit on the open meeting law and social media. Go to the next slide, please. One of the things, and we do a lot of board and committee training, respectful communication. We don't have to follow the national leaders in this regard, we can be respectful towards each other. We always have to be mindful that we're representing the town. And one of the questions we occasionally get is, well, you know, I showed up at this meeting, but I wasn't there as town counselor. I say this to town managers, police chiefs, fire chiefs, you never take the hat off. You are a town counselor twenty four seven, all of your communication, everything you say and do, you are the town counselor. You don't really get to take that off and step out of that role for specific purposes while you're in town. Civil and respectful communications, I will tell you this, I've, you know, it's it's something I have to remind myself occasionally. Don't send that text or email in the heat of anger. It's a great idea to sit on it for a day and then think about it, but then send it out. For those of you that have partners or spouses that more, that are more level headed, run it by them if you need to. But before, it's hard to undo those things, things when they appear in writing, when they appear in litigation. Take a look at the high profile trial going on right now. I think there's a lot of people involved who wish they had some text back. No personal attacks, again, we shouldn't take our lead from Washington, right? You folks all have different backgrounds, it's true of all the elected boards and committees that we deal with. You have different perspectives, like you're all here to serve the town. You can come to different conclusions, you can have different opinions on things. But when you get into questioning someone's motivation, that's when really the dynamic changes. So I think you should try to avoid that. You folks as local officials get accused of corruption, being part of conspiracies all day, every day. I haven't found it to be true to any extent, not compared to the amount of times that people get accused of it. But again, don't question each other's motives, don't question each other's really what what they're there for. You're all there for the benefit of the town. Next slide. Dealing with difficult topics. I was just telling my fellow attorneys, one of our clients, the city in metro Boston is, the city council is having a hearing to adopt the resolution on the Gaza ceasefire tonight. Right? That is going to be a very difficult meeting to manage at a minimum. But when you do have difficult topics, you know, manage public input. You folks do have public hearings, like on a liquor license, it's a public hearing, the public has a right to weigh in. One of our communities has gone through a very high profile dispute involving one of its public safety chiefs, where the public wanted to weigh in on employment decisions involving a police or a fire chief. That's not really appropriate. That's, you know, you can see how something like that could get out of control. But you need to know the difference. The public has a right to be at your meetings, for the most part, under the open meeting law. They don't always have a right to weigh in on every topic that you discuss. Yes.
Is it appropriate for the council to act upon the public's input in terms of investigating something?
You have an open forum, a part of your meeting?
Yes. Yes.
As lawyers, we all hate that, but we'll put that aside.
The beginning of the meeting and the end of the meeting.
The thing is, if if someone comes in and starts talking about something that's not on the agenda and you engage them, you are violating the open meeting law.
Yes.
So most cities and towns have adopted a practice, we'll take it under advisement, thank you for the information.
That's our practice.
And and that's the only way to deal with it effectively. Once you start engaging, for the most part, you know, it's very common for the person that can answer the question not to be there. So it's really not helpful. But if you take it under advisement and say, we'll get back to you with an answer, that's really the most effective way. But taking questions, dialogue during open forums is tough.
No, no, I understand that. Actually, what I meant was if citizens raise an issue, should the council delve into it further?
I think they should go through the manager and the council president to see if it's something you want to put on a future agenda. That's that's how I would approach it. That's what I would do. If you get into a meeting that's contentious, and and again, the the heat's risen on every political meeting, every government meeting, it happens, right? You can temporarily adjourn a meeting, let's take a five minute break, all right? You can temporarily adjourn a meeting, let's take a five-minute break, alright? Tabling something for a future meeting, if it's clear that the council is not gonna arrive at a conclusion at the meeting you have, let's table it and we'll come back at the next meeting and we'll, we'll try to figure it out. Um, I hear moderators say this a lot, it must be something moderators' association say for those town meeting towns, that the moderator can ask a police officer to remove someone who's being disruptive. Never, ever do that, never, alright? If you want, if someone's really disruptive during the meeting, take a break, try to reconvene, but, uh, that's an absolute, never. Next slide, please. And, and John did a great job of going through your charter and explaining what specific powers you have. You need to understand where your power, what, where is it derived from, it's derived from the charter. And what the charter gives you authority to do, those are the only things that you should do. As a council member, and this is true of people who are on elected and appointed boards in general, you have authority inside a posted meeting of your council. Once that meeting ends, you have no authority. And we're gonna talk about personal liability, but when you do things which you have no authority, or things that are outside the scope of your authority, that's when you put yourself at risk. So all of your power, all of your authority does really rest inside posted meetings of the council. And if there are questions, and, and I, we think we've already had questions regarding what is your authority? The town's attorney can answer the question and talk about, alright, here's, here's how the charter reads, alright? Is, this is, this is the answer to your specific question about your authority. You can certainly have discussions about it at a council meeting, but if there is a question as to interpretation of the charter, the town's attorney is the action, is the place to go. That's, that's the first place to go. Personnel matters, the next slide, please. It's limited to the appointment of the town manager, you appoint certain staff to the council, you ratified, um, town manager's appointments. Um, John included this in this slide, this is the section two, six, C three is really important. It, it, it does, and, and, and as John indicated, you have a really thoughtful charter. It really protects you, okay? If you don't hire, if you don't fire, alright, you don't issue discipline, you don't give people raises, there is no upside in for you whatsoever getting involved in these decisions. That's really what puts you at risk. So it's a very clear boundary, and I think it's helpful to understand that. Next slide, please. Collective bargaining, you do approve collective bargaining agreements to the degree that they require funding. The primary question you should be asking as counselors, is this negotiated agreement with one of our unions, is it sustainable? Alright, do we have the money this year, do we have the money in future years in the contract? That is really a critical part of your job, understanding the financial ramifications. Does this make sense to the town, can we afford this? We are going to run into, we are already running into much more difficult times with collective bargaining. And all of the extra money, the one-time funds that we got through COVID, our school departments are already running out of it. We are running into some serious challenging times to negotiate union contracts just because of our economies. We were, we have been giving more generous contracts than had been the past, given in the past. We're closer to giving three percent raises in a lot of cases than twos. We're gonna be, there's gonna be a retrenchment of that, and that's gonna cause some difficulties with collective bargaining. The example I give is you run into a firefighter that you know personally in the supermarket, he's angry that negotiations have bogged down, what do you say? What's the answer? What would you say to that person? You need to continue to work with the town manager, alright, you need to continue to work towards, but, you know, the town has a responsibility, and it hasn't happened in a long time, for those of us like John and I that have been around for a long time. We went through serious layoffs in two thousand, alright? We went through layoffs in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, right? It's a real possibility, younger employees, the young, the officials who haven't been around that long don't think it can happen. It is going to happen, it's very cyclical in nature, we're gonna run into this, so. What you tell that firefighter is, you know, and, and you have to listen to him, he's, he's a constituent presumably. You know, look, we're working on it, but we need to come up with a contract, you need to work with the town manager to come up with a contract that we can sustain. It has happened in the last year already, people have negotiated contracts that have led to layoffs in the second year of the agreement. We need to avoid that, those are the mistakes we made in the early part of the two thousands. Um, some workplace reminders. We are, you folks have political positions, and you have political discussions, that's the nature of your job, you're elected. However, the standards for political discourse, as we all know, have, well, I'll charitably say they've slipped, right? But we are also a workplace, alright? And I'll say the rough and tumble, um, expectations of the rough and tumble atmosphere that has really taken over political discourse doesn't apply to how we treat our employees. So we need to be aware of what are the employees' statutory rights. Um, you need to be aware that in, employees bring discrimination actions, harassment actions against elected officials, you don't want to be on the wrong side of that. There's a reason why your charter says that the council doesn't get involved in employment matters. Because it's too easy to violate the privacy rights of an employee, it's too easy to trend into discrimination issues. Your responsibility, if you become aware of somebody being harassed unlawfully or someone being discriminated against, is to report it to the town manager, the HR department. As employers, we cannot guarantee anybody harassment or discrimination free workplace, we can't do it, right? Don't have that much absolute control over the people that work for the town or appointed by the town. Our obligation is to investigate it. And we, and, and when you see huge discrimination, huge harassment, awards, judgments out of court, they're almost always due to the fact that people knew, but they didn't act on it, right? So we need to investigate, then take remedial action, so. You know what, you need, as soon as you find out that something happened, you should definitely report it. Unlawful harassment or discrimination, Massachusetts law prohibits harassment and discrimination on the basis of the person's membership in a protected class, alright? Race, color, national origin, ancestry, religious creed, disability, sex, age, sexual orientation, familial status, veteran status, criminal record, and gender identity indiscretion. Those are unlawful discrimination, if you are making decisions or treating someone differently on that basis. If one of our managers is disciplining employee that is doing a lousy job, alright, that is not discrimination, that is not harassment. Um, the term hostile work environment gets thrown out there pretty commonly by employees, but it's not hostile work environment unless it's based on one of those protected categories. Again, your duty is really to report it if you become aware, alright? That's the best thing, the most important thing you can do. The next slide. We're legally obligated again to take action to investigate, that's the most important thing that you do. You need to refer immediately once that happens, go to the next slide. Personal liability, uh, you are indemnified by the town. What that means is that the town will defend you, alright, provide legal counsel if you are named in a suit, they will defend you. And under some circumstances, the town and its insurer may pay a judgment against you. However, you have to be acting within the scope of your authority. If you take an action, you make a decision outside of a meeting, you don't have any authority. So you're already outside, potentially outside the bounds of condemnation, putting yourself at risk. If your charter says that you can't be involved in hiring, firing decisions, if you do get involved and you get named in a lawsuit, you're putting yourself at risk because the charter says that is not within the scope of your authority. So that's really important to understand. Has anybody been involved in a lawsuit, I don't want to ask questions, has anybody been named in a lawsuit? Um, it's really an unpleasant experience, and, and these cases typically go five, six, seven years, that is not unusual. When you, if you were named as an individual, alright, you can be named in your capacity as a counselor, if someone is suing the council because they were denied a liquor license, they're, they're suing you in your professional capacity as a counselor, that's one thing. If they're saying you took action outside of a meeting and they sue you personally, that's totally different, you really need to be concerned about that. Litigation will follow you even if you leave office. And the threat of hanging, having a judgment against you is real. And it is not a pleasant experience, it's something that will always be in the back of your mind, you'll have to go through depositions, potentially court appearances, you want to avoid it. The best way to avoid it is, again, really stay within the bounds of what your legal authority is. Insurer does have a duty to defend you. We get into this in one of our communities where a couple of stuck board members and the town administrator, they will cross complaints. The insurer will defend everybody, but if there's a judgment against you, particularly if it involves punitive damages, the insurer may not pay, which means you are personal liability, you are personal assets of interest. That's, again, important. Just avoid this position. John mentioned the conflict of interest law, if you violate the conflict of interest law, you are left to defend yourself, alright? The town does not provide any representation for you. And if you are in, under investigation by the Ethics Commission, I can tell you, you need a lawyer, and it is not cheap, alright? You can avoid that, if there is anything that looks, sounds, smells like it could be a conflict of interest issue, take advantage of their hotline at the Ethics Commission. You call them before you take an action, before you make a decision. If you follow their guidance, you really can't get in trouble. John's probably sharing the same opinion, I'm sure you, we, we've been dealing with the conflict of interest law for a long time, I've been dealing with it for thirty years. I couldn't tell you with any degree of certainty how they're gonna file it, right? Don't put yourself in that position, call them before you make a decision, again, that's personal liability, you want to avoid that. The open meeting law, I'm not gonna talk too much about that, uh, you've probably had. You know, what's the biggest area where people get tripped up by all? Sending emails to each other, right? Text change to each other, just avoid it. The, if you are doing reply all, you know, it's a deliberation, it's a violation of the law, alright? The worst, one of the worst aspects of some, of finding that you violated the open meeting law is it conveys to the public a message that you are doing things behind closed doors, alright, that you're being sneaky, that you're engaged in a conspiracy. And like any other law, the open meeting law is complicated. You really, it, it can, you can get tripped up on technical issues. I will tell you, I'm not gonna go through all of it, but when we talk about, skip to executive session, please.
Too bad it doesn't apply to the legislature.
What's that?
Too bad, too bad it doesn't apply to the legislature.
Um, that doesn't apply to the legislature, getting a budget done on time doesn't apply to the legislature, actually getting things done doesn't apply to the legislature.
Yeah, it's just.
Uh, you'll, you'll hear no argument from me. Executive session, look, the, the, the whole thing about executive session is if you're going into executive session, and councils don't go in that often, correct?
Very rarely.
Yeah, we, we probably do it.
I would say that you, you should never do it without checking with council, okay? And council will tell you how to post it, council will tell you how to vote in the meeting. Uh, and council will provide real safeguards. If you go into executive session to talk about a personnel matter, you have to give notice to the employee, alright, forty-eight hours notice. You can't talk about employee performance in executive session, that is an open session area. So if you get into executive session, you talk about anything other than a specific complaint to charge, you're violating the law. And those violations can trigger personal liability by the employee, if they say you violated my rights to the open meeting law. If you folks went into executive session to talk about the town manager's contract and you started discussing performance, you're violating the law. I didn't write it, that's just what it is, so you really need to be careful about that. People have questions about that, I'm, I'm getting them. There are a lot of resources for the open meeting law, one thing I'll finish with, I'm gonna skip to social media. Michael Caitlin and I were talking the other day, um, about the absence of a real press. When I started in East Bridgewater, they had a local correspondent, a woman whose family had been in town for many years, you may even know Jane Haynes was, was there. She was the local correspondent for the enterprise, she covered every meeting. She knew what was going on, she provided several reports a week, that's where the public got information about town government. You don't have that anymore. And one of the things that spilled the vacuum is social media. And social media, um, I, I don't want to be too outrageous by saying this, but everything on the internet is not true, surprisingly. So we gotta, we have to be careful with it. You folks need to be, if you can skip to social media, thanks. You folks have to be cautious in a couple of ways. If multiple counselors are weighing in on a topic, there, there must be a town government, a town events forum on Facebook here, there must be a Facebook page, right? If you folks, if, if more than four of you are weighing in on a topic, that is potentially an open meeting law violation, right? I mean, it can be useful, Facebook and other social media can be useful to find out what people are thinking, what they're talking about. And then maybe you come back to a council meeting and, boy, you put something out through the town's social media to put out the facts of a situation. But engaging people on, in social media is, over the course of thirty years, you know, almost every elected official I've dealt with has tried and then ultimately been frustrated to the point where people are just attacking you, it's just too easy, it's difficult. I'm not saying that you should abandon it, ignore it, but really keep it in context. We have seen social media topics, Facebook topics that got hundreds of posts, people were going crazy about it over the course of forty-eight hours. And then no one comes to a meeting to discuss that issue, so you really need to really provide some context to it and understand that it's, it, it can just be a small amount of people, yeah.
But if there is a big kerfuffle on social media, is it appropriate to say we should put it on the agenda for discussion, so your concerns can be heard?
I'll give you the worst lawyer answer, it depends, right? Um, well, everybody hates, one lawyer say that. I think what you do is you contact the town manager, say, are you aware that people are talking about this situation? And then I think you come up with a way, you know, how often does the council meet? Uh, these Facebook controversies typically rise and flame out in a couple of days.
Yeah.
So you may want to put out more, put out accurate information much more quickly. Water, water issues are coming up in many towns in the South Shore. You don't want to wait to a, to a council meeting to address it. It may make sense to have the water superintendent come to a meeting, your next meeting, and just talk about what's going on, again, to provide real, accurate information, but you may not want to wait that long.
What I've told them historically, and not maybe this particular body, but just. What I've pulled back historically and not maybe this particular body, but just over the years, the, the body that makes up the town council is they are a policy-making body under our charter. Their job is to make policy. So that comes in the form of resolutions, orders and ordinances. If it doesn't involve those things, it's iffy whether or not we should be having discussions on it. Now, they, they can come up with whatever orders, ordinances or policies they want to propose. But their job is policymaking body. That's their role in our municipal government. So it, it is not a open meeting. It is not a public meeting in that sense of, you know, you're, you're just sitting there talking about whatever you want to talk about. The goal in the, in the way that this body works is to make policy. The legislature.
Is it not true that discussion can lead to policy?
You guys can, there's a discussion part of our agenda. That says discussion. The town, uh, council president, the town manager, that's the agenda. Whatever you all want to put on that discussion, as long as you post it, it's not an open meeting law violation. But generally speaking, the, the, the way that you affect change, which is I'm assuming why you're sitting in that seat, is through policymaking. So a discussion can certainly lead to the drafting of proposed orders, ordinances and/or resolution. But if the intent is simply to just talk and not to make policy, you can do that. But it does not fit within the confines of what actually your role is under the charter.
As long as it's aimed at policy.
Anything can be aimed at policy, sure, yeah. But, but the, the point I'm making is the, what you're trying to do in that role is figure out what we want to draft so that we can affect the change that we want. Now, it could be you want it, but eight others don't. Or it could be you want it and four others don't. But that really is the goal, to get to that point where the discussion involves an actual thing that's before you rather than a discussion of hypothetical things that don't exist in front of you. Because again, you're, just like the legislature. They, they have bills, right? They might argue about all kinds of stuff as it relates to that bill, right? That's your goal, is to create policy.
Right. And is it not true that the legislature generally will have hearings on things? Okay, or?
We're not the legislature.
I thought we, the council are the legislature and we can call it the water department, for example, for.
No, you're the legislative branch of our government. No, are you talking about the state legislature?
I was referring to us as the legislature. Yes. Well, the question is, the legislature, we can bring in people like the head of the water department to discuss things if we put it on the agenda. Now, I understand only the president and the town manager can put things on the agenda, which I find to be an impediment to other counselors attempting to set policy.
So as Attorney Clifford said, the answer to your question, I'm going to say the same answer, it depends. If you're calling the water superintendent to come so you can discuss the decisions he's making in his employment, that is a complete violation of the charter. If you're calling him there to give you information about why the water is brown because citizens are concerned about that, which we've done on numerous occasions, that's completely appropriate. So it depends on the context in which you're bringing that employee before the board.
Yes, and common sense says you will say to the water department fellow, so what do you do about it? And then that can lead to setting policy. Is that not correct?
Counsel, are we still trying to finish up the presentation? So we'll.
Right, let's leave it.
Yes, I actually have to kind of put a bow on this topic. I think the, the biggest issue with social media is, and all of the grievances that people specifically in our town like to air on social media is there is not a lot of truth in what they are saying. So if there was a lot of truth, when that information was then brought to our town council president or our town manager, it likely would end up on the agenda as a discussion item. But if there is a lack of truth and a lack of knowledge and an ill-informed base, it's very hard to then create policy off of an ill-informed base. So I think we need to do a better job of engaging our constituents in factual information and not regurgitated nonsense.
I, I think we haven't had a lot of items under discussions, at least as long as I've been on the council. It's almost all together, skipped and maybe we should use that. I have a social media question. Is it true that the ACLU just won something that basically said you can't delete a comment if you, if you set up a page as a counselor, which I have, I can't delete a comment. Is that, is that true?
There's, there's a gray area on any communication that you put on there in your capacity as government officials, all right? That they may be considered public records.
Right.
And I'm vaguely aware of that case, but.
I kind of stopped using it for that. When I heard that, it's like, yeah, I'm not going to allow anybody my page to attack someone else.
You hide a corner. That where the gray area lies.
I think, I think what it actually was, was people were restricting, blocking people. If you're out there as a government official, I think you have some limitations on blocking people from being on your, on your social media page. Again, if you're doing it as a government official.
That was my question next. Would, do you think it wise for a town council member to have a page that's saying that they're the Bridgewater Town Council versus just they're an individual personal page? Is that wise? Or not wise to have a page that's stating that you're, you know, Bridgewater Town Council?
Given our experience, you, Caitlin's been involved in a lot of different investigations. It's hard to see upside for you folks actively engaging on government issues on social media.
Same level inside cases arise from digital communications, disparaging public emails and stuff.
That I, this is my opinion, have seen is like, seen as a communication. So if the water superintendent writes up a summary of what's happening, updates, something that is meant to like mass communicate, it can be, you know, with way to reach people. But in terms of engaging back and forth, and I think referring to, can have First Amendment implications because you're acting as a government official. So limit comments of this viewpoint and not another. That's where we see people getting into trouble. But I think obviously it can be a different situation when there's inappropriate commentary or things like that that you want to delete, but it's as an individual, as well as individuals to try to thread that needle. That's why we kind of advise really careful about bringing that here.
And to your point, you know, in good faith, as an elected official in Bridgewater, you put out accurate information on something and, and the responses of, you know, personal ad hominem attack, you know, then what do you do? And it's, and it's hard not to respond.
I worked in public access for thirty-seven years, so we put everybody on even controversial speech that it wasn't, it wasn't a gatekeeper role. So that's kind of what I'm used to. But what I'm finding, I, I'm administrator, I'm one of the two town pages. I won't let anyone attack anybody on page that I administer. Volunteer thing, I'm getting paid for it.
That's, that's an even more thankless task than.
It is a thank. But the, the person that was running it was going to dump it. And I'm like, you need, there's, there's two of them. One lets the personal attacks fly. And I don't.
In the absence of any other way of getting feedback, right? It can be a good source. What's bothering people, right? My sense in, with Bridgewater and all of the towns that are having water issues, these issues go back fifty years and they caused millions upon millions to fix and years to fix. It's, it's not, these aren't simple issues. And, and I'm guessing your water superintendent, the same in Cohasset situation. The last thing he wants to hear or see is stuff about brown water. Right? But these aren't simple issues. And again, they're, they're expensive and complicated to fix.
I suggested to the town manager today that he become a TV star again. He go on Facebook again and, and just do the update, bring the water superintendent in. And because when there's no knowledge, that's when all the misunderstandings and the vitriol is going to come out. But if, 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 if there's dissemination of official information by the town manager and his employees, then I think we're in better shape. We're still going to get the naysayers, no question about it.
If I can reduce everything then depends on.
Hi, I'm the town manager. That's it.
It's really repetition. What other, what other questions can I answer? Again, I, one of my big messages to you is you have a great form of government, right? I've seen them all and a lot of them don't work effectively, all right? That, that accountability piece is huge. And it's, and it's missing. In Massachusetts and New England, we like to think of ourselves as advanced and really progressive in regard to town government. There are towns in this area that still have elected highway surveyors, all right? One of the most famous highway surveyors in Massachusetts was John Adams. That's how far back that position goes, all right? You have gotten past all of that stuff. So you know, you should be congratulated. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure it will work well for you.
I was just going to make the comment that our town, having come from open town meeting, is very used to citizens being informed, which is why I would like to get matters on the agenda from citizens to be responsive to the constituents. That's just a comment.
I'll, I'll, I'll be very general about this, but I use the analogy talking about open town meeting. Picture yourself in a restaurant with a hundred people, all right? Instead of the owners of the restaurant deciding what's on the menu, what are the hours, what's the staffing? We put it out to the hundred people in the restaurant. You decide how we're going to run things, right? Town meeting works very well. We're town council. And East Bridgewater works very effectively there. Works well in Rockland. Other communities, because for three or four nights, you have communities the size of Bridgewater that have a hundred and fifty people voting on their budget. A lot of places it doesn't work.
Thirteen nights.
Oh, yeah, it's I, you know, I cringe when I hear people say it's the purest form of government. It's hard. People are busy getting, a lot of people show up. Back in the early two thousands, when I was in Marshfield as town administrator, routinely five, six hundred people show up. Attendance has really gone down pretty rapidly. Any other questions or comments?
We're available for any questions as well.
Anybody have any questions for one of these guys? We can speak with them personally after we're done.
I have one more question. A constituent brought this to me, which was that many of the committees and boards and commissions and so forth are advisory and they would like to be ministerial. What is your feeling about that?
People who run for, or people who want to serve on the planning board, the ZBA, the Conservation Commission, they do it because they're interested in the topics that those committees are responsible for. No one gets involved. In my experience, it's very rare that someone gets involved to manage personnel. And, and when, in a lot of these towns, that's what happens. They have that responsibility to manage personnel. And the personnel, you know, candidly, there's, there's kind of a lack. So, I mean, they, you know, if they're advisory, I think that's what makes sense. If you give more authority to those boards and committees, you're diluting the centralized authority under your charter that rests with the town council and the town manager. I think that's the risk. What you lose when you have that is accountability. Not the answer you were looking for.
Any other questions, anybody?
If, if I can, just with respect to the same topic. But in my understanding, the boards, commissions and committees that we deem to be under our charter, and our charter identifies them as such, to be ministerial are responsible for administering specific provisions of state law. Okay, planning board is chapter forty, the zoning act. Conservation Commission, River Protection Act, you know, wetlands protection, right? ZBA, also a certain portion of zoning. So they are the only body specifically enabled under state law to administer those sections of state law. And we've already discussed previously the fact that that gives rise to the adjudicatory hearings that those types of bodies conduct when they issue permits and take other action. So that's what differentiates ministerial committees, boards and commissions from advisory committees and boards.
Yes, like our library trustees are elected. I believe they are not ministerial. Is that so?
A library board? Well, all their authority is, is
Purview of the library.
With respect to the, to the library. I have to believe that's, that's carved out from a section of masterful laws.
I think due to the fact they're an elected board, they're, they're not designated anything. They're not designated ministerial. So they're, they're elected, same as the school board.
I think the confusing matter is those distinctions that you're actually making are relative to the town code. And in the town code, really, each one of those boards and bodies are intended, if they're not adjudicated for, all right, there's some that are adjudicated for. Like Attorney Clifford just said, the ZBA, the planning board, the conservation commission, those are adjudicated for bodies. They make determinations under the law that can be appealed, that will go to court. But the other bodies are intended to be assistance in some way or some specific task to either you or the town manager, whatever their role is. There's a, there's a whole variety. So really, one of the only ministerial ones that I can think of off the top of my head might be the electors who have to sign off on a couple of things. But ministerial in that context is like a one, one task. It is not making a decision. It is not creating policy. It is not doing any type of action other than a specific task. Advisory is, this is who I'm going to advise. So I think there's a lot of confusion on that. I'm not sure what body you're specifically talking about making difference.
I've actually heard from several constituents about several boards.
So which, which board are you saying? Because the, the boards are also different. They all do different things. So which board specifically are you asking? Should it be ministerial? Because there, there's probably an easy yes or no answer to it based on what the role of that board actually is. You can't make a board that advises the town manager on park. You have a park board, let's say, or the tree committee. You, you can't make them ministerial. They have no task to actually accomplish. Ministerial means you have some administrative task, like I have to sign this as the board of electors. I have to make a decision on the rules of voting. That's a ministerial thing. The, the tree committee doesn't have a ministerial act.
Aren't they supposed to point out trees to be cut down that are danger to the community?
No, they can advise.
They don't have the direct say.
They can advise which ones are dangerous, I see.
Well, that's not, their role isn't, they don't directly enforce, remember, just look back to policymaking. This is literally the entire intent of Attorney Gannon. Gannon's going through the charter. That was the exact, that's exactly what he was explaining, right, is these are your roles. These are the town manager's roles. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't work under our charter. It would never pass muster constitutionally under Madison law or under our charter to say that who say that we're creating a board that dictates to the town manager employment matters. That's a violation of our charter.
I don't see that as an employment matter, but a duty, but that's for discussion at a future time.
I'm just describing the, the law, so.
Your town government, like every other town government, relies a lot on the willingness of volunteers to serve. But with the exception of the boards that have statutory authority or responsibility to make decisions, you're, you have a council on aging that is advising the town on matters relative to what our seniors do, right? The library trustees are there to provide advice on what our library needs. So, I mean, we rely on those volunteers to do a lot of important work and provide a lot of important input. But there is definitely a distinction between that and operational decision making, and that's, I think that's where things can really get tripped up.
That's pretty standard across the board with every town, there's not a whole lot of states applying between the two types of, of boards and towns across the board.
Any more questions, any more questions? Either John or Don?
I mean, if anyone wants to speak to anyone individually afterward?
Stick around after. I just want to thank both, both John Gannon, John Clifford and Caitlin for coming.
Thank you very much.
I think educational, so this is not the end of council education, obviously. We will continue to bring either speakers in front of you or we'll continue to give you educational materials that will go over in a, in a group setting or that you can go over individually. There are a lot of really great items on the DOR website, which we look forward to, great videos. And a lot of them are geared towards, you know, town meeting form of government, but there are some that are more geared toward local government issues as well. Yeah, Massachusetts Municipal Association has a lot of materials as well, MMA.org. They have monthly newsletter, The Beacon, discusses current and new issues involving local government.
And the HE's office does open meeting law training, so I think we should
We'll probably do that. They can, they do that either in person or they do it in a Zoom setting, I think now.
They have, they too have a newsletter. They do open, they do the training.
This, this is just sort of the, the opening. I was talking to somebody today and I, you know, it, it's, I've been, been doing municipal government for twenty-five years or something. And I learn something new every day. And I want to learn something new every day. If I'm not learning something new every day, then I'm so, so that, you know, I sort of want to get that out there. There's no, you don't have to know everything hour or two hours. You don't have to know everything in two weeks or two years. It's a long process to really soak in, soak in the information. We did not talk about finance. Lori and I are going to work on sort of a separate finance presentation at a, at a high level, you know, at the thirty thousand foot level and try to get some, get everybody sort of on the same page, hopefully in the same boat too. And then we can, we can have more rational discussions about finances when we get into the budget preparation time later in the fall. So thank you to John, thank you to John.
Yes, great.
I appreciate it. Have more food.
Yeah.